Ask this information to me. We've had an individual in town that's been a problem, you know, screaming how I'm raising his voice. Go there, he's that kind of thing. Um, found out today that he packed up his vehicle and moved down. So he is, uh, he's gonna be a problem anymore. So if you guys have any questions, we can talk about it in here, but. I mean, that's, I think y'all need to talk about it, so. Anyway, does anybody have any questions for me? Okay, thanks.
Uh, yeah, you've got Kirk's report there. Um, on the pull new water line, it says locusts, it's actually park, it's the one from the, um, just love coffee, sorry, of the truck, who means, so that one's from advanced by Studio Cross. The main sits on the south side of the road and we had a pull new one right the highway, so we had to come and solve that.
Car wash.
Yeah.
You've heard of the water leak, car wash.
Yeah.
Police break.
No, I meant right here, it says locusts, he means park, new water line, new water leak.
Oh, okay.
It shouldn't be seven, it should be east locusts, it should be park.
Gotcha.
Sorry, the one below it, yep, yeah, they're both locusts. Um, so that's where that one's at. Um, obviously, if you guys may notice, our flower baskets, for some reason, a lot of them have died. We really don't know why, they're looking really good. Um, overwater, too much water, uh, we. We're still investigating, if you has any ideas, we're not necessarily agreeing with them, but we've been good for four July, I don't know what, I don't know what happened, so.
There's one that's still alive, but that one's hidden, so.
Yes, yes, there is, so.
If you put moss on top of them.
So I'm not for sure what happened.
They've got too much water.
What I'm saying is, is you can put the moss on the top and then you don't have to water them as much.
So.
You wouldn't know any good germs.
I think they got rain too much.
People who plant them, I haven't come look or.
We sure can. We sure can, I mean, I'd go in, if anybody in town has, is any good plants, we'll even take the baskets down if they wanna. Look at them and just kinda drink them.
Yeah.
We'll take them down and see what, you know, so we know for future, don't water them as much, you water them too much, it was when. Our guys, they don't know, they did, told them that's, Forbes and someone didn't make it, so.
My question would be in the structure of the basket, obviously, the roots are too much water, for whatever reason.
Which was surprising, so the structure of that basket is you have this huge basket and then the plant sits in there, but it doesn't sit over the bottom, so. That basket once hits halfway and then there's a reservoir on the bottom of it with a thick wick that, so you're actually filling the reservoir and then it's the wicking system. That's supposed to wick up the water through there. So the wick goes all the way up into where the soil's at and then in the reservoir. So I don't know if, when they planted them, the wick wasn't improper, I, I am not a, I'm not even pretending to know. Uh, so other than that, uh, our guys have been busy, pouring concrete, it's up to date, so we've been coming along and during the rainy season, we've been, uh, starting to paint, pick tables and getting them cleaned up, so.
Yes.
My wife is a former floral manager for Hy-Vee, she's got a baby, pretty thumbnail, I know. I can get a hold of her and ask her about it.
Sure, we'll take some baskets down.
I don't think we need to tell also. I don't know, I don't know about it.
Well, all, all the ones, so all the ones that don't make it here this week are, don't ever start coming back, we'll probably take them down, dump them out, so they're not dead and forged and, and the weight, so. So I'll keep replanting it for next, next year, whenever, so we'll take some down, we'll show it to whoever has any good ideas.
Did they say how you water, or how does it put in, or how, is there some kind of a?
Susan, Susan told us, and I, we just went off of what her study was.
Put so much in every week, or?
I think it's depending on temperature, wind, I mean, you know, plants are in yards and, yeah, so, we very well could have been the reason.
You didn't know, so.
I am excited to see the potential cement and per, uh, table in the park, in Gilbert's Park.
Oh, yeah, let's throw up on that today, yep, yep.
Yeah, that'll be fun, that'll be a nice place.
And we're probably being tomorrow, so.
Hey, senior attorney, Kyle, you got anything right now?
Yeah, uh, activity this month, most of it, um, I probably want to discuss in the executive session with the pushback at the very end, but. Uh, we have the, the trustees sale scheduled for the one oh seven First Street property, um, I ended up postponing the sale. There's a certain period of time that you can postpone sales without having to run notice again, um, so I did postpone it to. Provide an opportunity to hear the default, see if the defaults cured in that period of time, but otherwise, uh, August ninth will be, uh, the sale date. There was one, uh, individual who showed up, uh, and was interested in bidding, so I'll make sure to, uh, let him know, uh, what the credit gave me. So that maybe potentially we have a better of sales in place. Um, but yeah, the rest of it, uh, could happen.
Mm-hmm. Discussion action, mayor, board, point blank, Andy Van Boren, Tricia Scott, four-year term. Everybody good with that?
I make a motion to approve Tricia Scott to four-year term for Andy Van Boren.
Tyler?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Jordy?
Aye.
Meg?
Aye.
Number six, discussion allocation of city sales tax.
So I talked with Tyler, the turf arder, and he was in favor of what Kyle and everyone suggested, probably not the time or the year, and we're in a good situation to not, not move forward on that, so. He thinks it's probably not a very good political move or to put it on the ballot right now, so he said financially, we're, everything's appropriate and we can move forward with it as is, if we so choose to, so.
You ready to do anything now, just?
Yeah, we'll be done, yeah, we'll, we'll bring it up again in the next fiscal, next, yep.
Sounds good, talking right on schedule, number seven.
Are we actually tailing it or we're just continuing forward?
Well, it's just a discussion, because there's no action.
Yeah, and there won't be any action till next.
Next year.
Yeah, 'cause it's in our, it's in our, we bring it up every, every even June, even year June, so, point, point six.
All right, number seven, public hearing, six forty-five P M, light study proposed redevelopment area number two. Public hearing, six forty-five P M, general redevelopment plan, proposed redevelopment area number two. Public hearing, six forty-five P M, light study proposed redevelopment period three. Public hearing, six forty-five P M, general redevelopment plan, proposed redevelopment period three.
It'd be you guys out there saying something.
Do you wanna open up, wanna open up the hearings, so we open up the light study hearing for redevelopment area two? Do the public hearing, close the hearing, open the hearing, close the hearing, open it, got it, and then we can make our decisions.
I guess one court does do a lot more time.
Sorry.
Just copy and paste, right?
It's not my fault, call your senator.
I tried, he's busy, too, what she said.
So at this time, I'll open the public hearing for light study proposed redevelopment area number two.
Um, so, uh, does, do you, does the council have maps of the area? Okay, so we're in proposed redevelopment area two, um, just a quick reminder, so we are. First of all, if you don't, if I don't know all of you, my name's Bobby Pettit, I'm a community planner, um, I work in Carney, Nebraska, and, um, we were engaged by the city to complete these light studies, so. We are following community redevelopment law, the thing that community, that community redevelopment law is most popular for in Nebraska is. Every so often, you'll hear references to tax increment financing, changing the TIF laws, um, people asking for TIF. Um, whenever you are utilizing tax increment financing, you need to be in a redevelopment area. A redevelopment area, in order for it to be a redevelopment area, it has to have been declared blighted substandard, so our job for you was to complete the blighted substandard study. The criteria is laid out by community redevelopment law, so there's a set of criteria for blights and there's a set of criteria for substandard, so our job, um, was to go through. Look at the redevelopment area, look at the criteria, and then complete the study for you and tell you whether or not, um, the area met the criteria of being declared blighted and substandard. Um, so, um, I went through it, I would say more in depth with your planning commission, and you have a good planning commission that asks you questions. Uh, and they recommended that, um, just a minute ago, you might have overheard us, they recommended that, um, we had, that we would accept the blighted substandard study. And then declare this a proposed redevelopment area two, so, um. If, I have the study with me and we sent the study to Jeremy ahead of time, um, we had to advertise a lot for the hearings, we had one. Um, resident that saw the advertisement emailed us and requested a copy of the study, um, so within the study, we have, um, six substandard factors. Um, we have to find any combination of substandard factors out of these six, so when I read any combination, I read two or more. Um, we found three substandard factors, and then in the blighted portion of the study, there are ten subjective factors. And five objective factors, so I'm currently raising teenagers, and so I'm aware of what subjective means all the time, everything means we could really, we could debate these and, um. Uh, we could argue about those, and then the objective ones are, um, the numbers are what they are, so, um, back to the substandards, we found three out of six. Substandard criteria, in the blight study portion, we found six out of ten subjective factors. Uh, the planning commission, um, bucked me, and I think they were right on two of those factors, so if we eliminate two of them, then we found four out of ten subjective factors. And we only needed two, and then we found one out of five objective factors. So I am telling you that based on the study, this redevelopment area two, um, meets the definition of blight and substandard based on community redevelopment law. So the public doesn't have any questions, you could probably close this hearing and move on to the next hearing.
I could make a motion to open a public hearing for proposal redevelopment area number two.
Second.
Um.
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Jordy?
Aye.
Meg?
Aye.
So then do we wanna jump down to the number eight, nine, discussion action? On light study proposed redevelopment area number two, since you just talked about it.
Sure.
Make a motion to approve the proposed redevelopment area number two?
Second.
Second.
Hey, Tyler.
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Jordy?
Aye.
Meg?
Aye.
And number nine, discussion action, general redevelopment plan, proposed redevelopment area number two.
So when we are the firm that's completing the white study, I like to lead you with a general redevelopment plan, but the, the redeva, whenever you have a blighted area or redevelopment area. Then you need to adopt a redevelopment plan to go with it, and then as you approve redevelopment projects in the area. You would approve those as amendments to the redevelopment plan, so while you wouldn't have to have your general redevelopment plan in place right now, I think it's a best practice.
Sorry, Bobby, um, is there a motion to open a, a public hearing?
Are we supposed to be a public hearing right now? No, we didn't.
Okay, this is different, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I totally opened it.
No.
No, just so excited.
Yeah.
So a motion for a general redevelopment plan, proposed redevelopment area two.
To approve the general, yeah.
I'll motion.
Second.
Hey, Tyler.
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Good?
Aye.
Meg?
Aye.
Okay, so.
She gets to talk.
Okay, does public hearing open?
Yes, yes, just did it.
Just open, okay, so the, if you, if you have a blighted area, then, um, you need to have a redevelopment plan for the area. The redevelopment plan has to get adopted and amended in the same manner with the, with all of these public hearings that planning commission and the council. So since we're already here advertising for all these hearings, I like to leave you with a general redevelopment plan. So when, when we leave you tonight, you'll have your general redevelopment plan in place, then now you've got a blighted area, you've got a redevelopment area, you have a general redevelopment plan. Developers can come to you then with a re, a redevelopment contract, so the redevelopment contract is gonna go through all the same steps, it's gonna go to planning commission, it's gonna go to council. The redevelopment contract, it gets approved as an amendment to your general redevelopment plan. So your general redevelopment plan right now has basic information in it, it has an existing land use map of redevelopment area two, which is current because we just did that for you. Um, when we did your comprehensive plan, then it has a future land use map, so your future proposed uses in redevelopment area two. Which is also then put into this redevelopment plan, taken right out of your comprehensive plan, and then it has a list of what would be eligible projects that you would do in redevelopment area two. To redevelop the area, and within that list of projects, you are saying that you will entertain, or you will consider, or you will approve redevelopment contracts. The redevelopment contracts are what give you the authority, the authority to grant tax increment financing for a redevelopment project in the area. So you are not, by, by approving this general redevelopment plan, you are not approving any specific projects tonight. You are approving, uh, like a shell, like a general plan, so that when it's time to approve a project, you have an amendment to attach to that plan. So if you didn't have the general plan in place now, you would have to do that plan later when you are putting the redevelopment contract together. And so it either be from, somebody from the city putting the plan together, or maybe your attorney, or maybe the developer's attorney, so I think it's just. Better to leave you with this general redevelopment plan, so you have something ready to be amended.
I agree.
Any public comment?
Come out of the public hearing?
Second.
Second.
Tyler?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Jordy?
Aye.
Meg?
Aye.
Okay, so now, number, number nine, is that right?
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Discussion action, general redevelopment plan, proposed redevelopment area two. Any more discussion?
Make a motion, general redevelopment plan, proposed redevelopment area number two?
Okay, second.
Second.
Tyler?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Jordy?
Aye.
Meg?
Aye.
Okay, we'll promote motion to open public hearing for light study proposed redevelopment area three.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Tyler?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Jordy?
Aye.
Meg?
Aye.
Wait till we go on here. We're here.
Yeah, we're on for three.
Trying to keep my brain.
Yeah.
So are we.
Okay, so redevelopment area three is on the southeast edge of town, uh, we follow the same criteria or the same method as we did for redevelopment area two. So in the substa, in the substandard portion of the study, we found four, we have, we found the presence of four out of six substandard factors, we needed to find two. In the blight study portion, um, we found seven out of ten subjective factors, and we found two out of five objective factors, so. I am telling you that redevelopment area three meets the criteria of being declared a blighted substandard study.
Any questions?
Kirkus?
Come on.
What?
Come on.
Okay, I'll make a motion to come out of public hearing then.
In a second.
Okay. Tyler?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Jordy?
Aye.
Meg?
Aye.
So then we jump down to the number ten, discussion action, light study proposed redevelopment area three. Any more discussion?
I'll make a motion, light study proposed redevelopment area three.
Okay, second.
Second.
Tyler?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Jordy?
Aye.
Meg?
Aye.
Okay, we'll, uh, we can promote motion to open a public hearing, six forty-five P M, for general redevelopment plan, proposed redevelopment area three.
I'll make a motion to open a public hearing?
Second.
Tyler?
Aye.
Green? Jordy?
Aye.
Meg?
Aye.
So the same applies, we have a blighted area, I wanna leave you with a general redevelopment plan for the area. Everything in your general redevelopment plan is taken out of your comprehensive plan, except for those lists of projects that you will entertain, so you are saying. Uh, redevelopment area three, like, we've prepared the field for play, so if we wanna get into it now, um, we're saying that we will. We'll consider it.
Any discussion?
Uh, I was wondering what, if you approve area two and three, what percentage it would be of the total town, 'cause there was a limit of fifty percent?
Yes.
So I was thinking if in the future, if you're now at forty-nine and you wanna move somewhere else in the future, then adjust it with an amendment or whatever, then you might. Not be able to, I don't know how it works, but.
Um, I, I will look that percentage up for you and give it to you before I leave, um. I left all my papers in Moles Pickup Truck, so I have to look that up, um, but I will tell you that, um. You do need to stay under fifty percent, so if we wanted to, we could, if I wanted to, I could look at all of Plainview and say that a hundred percent of Plainview probably meets the criteria of being blighted and substandard. Um, however, because you are a city of the second class, you have to stay at fifty percent, so, um, all of this started in nineteen ninety-four, so there's lots of communities that since nineteen ninety-four. Have wanted to take, um, have wanted to take areas out of a blighted area, or they've done redevelopment in that area and it no longer qualifies. So the state is, the wheels are really starting to turn at the state on what process we have to follow to do deblighting. Up until last year, if we decided that we wanted to deblight something, then the council just passed a resolution and said, okay, this chunk of ground is now deblighted and we moved our blight percentage. To somewhere else in town, um, it's not, it doesn't say it in the law, but we, generally, it's been a best practice not to declare something deblighted if it has an active TIF project. So you have an active, an active TIF project, the timeframe is fifteen, basically fifteen years, so if a redeveloper does a project in the blighted area. The increment on their property taxes, the increased property taxes comes back to them to help pay them back the cost of the development, but they can only do that for fifteen years. After fifteen years, the property taxes goes everywhere, so if we are still in that fifteen-year window, it's been a best practice to leave it in a blighted area. But there's no firm guidance on how to deblight and reblight, last summer, when the, um, legislative session ended, or ended, they did pass an emergency clause, I don't think this is an emergency, but they passed. An emergency clause that, um, you had to do a deblight study to take it out of a blighted area, so we did that, I know it's job security for me. We did that, um, for the city of York not that long ago, and all we did was we put a picture, we put a picture of the area, we were deblighting. The ownership and the reason we were deblighting it, a couple times, it's because they had done a housing project and the housing project was done. Was set, the redevelopment project was said and done, or they had decided they'd sort of lost hope with that owner, that anything was gonna happen in this area. Or we're also getting smarter and because the main incentive that we have to offer in a blighted area is a break on your property taxes. There's no point in having publicly owned land by the school, or the city, or the county, or a nonprofit, anybody that's not paying property taxes. And they're gonna be on that land for a while, there's no point in having them take away from our fifty percent percentage, so. So we're putting practices, it's, it's coming around and sooner or later, somebody's gonna sue somebody probably in Omaha, and then we're all gonna know exactly how we're supposed to go about deblighting. And we're probably gonna have more public hearings, and we're probably gonna send more money to the local newspaper, so. So there is a process to get out of that fifty percent, and, um, my teammate Doug Christensen, he did your blight study. We, we split up and he went to Stanton, and I don't have your blighted percentage, but before I leave, I will, I'll tell you what percentage you're at right now. Because now you do have three areas, you have your downtown area, which you already had, and now you have area two, which is on the north side of town, area three, which is on the south side of town. I know we've kept you under fifty percent because we don't ever take a community over fifty, but I don't know what your percentage is right now.
Any more discussion?
Make a motion to come out of public hearing?
Second.
Okay, Tyler?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Jordy?
Aye.
Meg?
Aye.
I believe that takes us down to discussion action, general redevelopment plan, proposed redevelopment area three.
I'll make a motion to approve general redevelopment plan, proposed redevelopment area number three.
Second.
Second.
Tyler?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Jordy?
Aye.
Meg?
Aye.
Okay, number twelve, public hearing, seven P M, lot split, thirty-three D twenty-eight four, Plainview College Edition Block thirty-six.
I make a motion to open public hearing for the lot split thirty-three twenty-eight four, Plainview College Edition Block thirty-six.
That's right, it's been.
Second.
Second.
Tyler?
Second, aye.
Start with the talk.
Jordy?
Aye.
Meg?
Aye.
I see, I forgot to ask to pack, this is my fault, um, essentially, so this is the cell tower that sits north, I can pass this around, this is cell tower that sits north on, um, North Seven's. Right to the south where Luke Shalowski lives, um, Terrell Milburn owns all that block, um, he wants to. Survey off the lot, the cell tower, uh, the cell tower's gonna buy that chunk and then he'll eventually sell his other remaining to, I'll flag names, yeah, I'll flag. Um, so a US seller came to us, they, we worked on for a couple months now, um, they first put up one that wouldn't fit, wouldn't fit the area, um, they presented zoning board today with it. We did, and it meets the criteria, and they recommend it for a lot split on that, for the cell tower, so it'll essentially kind of mimic the neighbor next to him, which is, um. Kevin Jenkins, where he split off, or Hainault Construction owns everything except for the cell tower, so it'll kind of match, match that area, so. I, I can pass a survey on this one, I'm all too, it's pretty, pretty cut and dry. Tyler, what are you doing? I'm sorry, I'm zoning, so, I mean, you have plenty of cuts for zoning, but, um. So yeah, pretty, pretty simple, uh, there's gonna own that little corner, I think seven five hundred square feet, uh, fits all of our zoning regulations, so.
Any public comment?
Make a motion to come out of public hearing?
Second.
No, second.
Tyler?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Jordy?
Aye.
Meg?
Aye.
Number thirteen, discussion action, lot split thirty-three twenty-eight four, Plainview College Edition Block thirty-six.
Make a motion to approve lot split thirty-three twenty-eight four, Plainview College Edition Block thirty-six.
Second.
Second.
Tyler?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Jordy?
Aye.
Meg?
Aye.
Number fourteen, discussion action, contract with Miller and Associates for upcoming sewer projects.
Okay, so this is what we've been talking about, this is gonna be the option that they're gonna submit to the state, um, they think they'll be ready to help us out, so we'll. Obviously, we have to do a contract, they don't do it for nothing, um, they'll probably propose three options for us to look at next month. And whatever option we so choose, which is like the end gun option, that we've been, like, we've been talking about, um, they'll present that to us, submit to the state, and then we'll finalize it, hopefully then we'll have. A direction moving forward for budget, so. This is just the contract for them to fulfill their duties.
Who'd like to come on?
I, Chris has done a great job, Chris Miller has, um, he's, he's got a hold of, um, he's been great so far, so, we're trying to do this the right way, contract first, work. And then get things done, so.
I make a motion to approve the contract with Miller and Associates for the upcoming sewer projects.
Hey, Tyler?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Jordy?
Aye.
Meg?
Aye.
Number fifteen, we need, is that one out?
Yep, yep.
Uh, discussion action, resolution number seven oh five, possession of real estate, three oh four East Woodland Avenue, they have a seven five twenty.
So I, Kyle built this one up, um, this is because the remotes period doesn't get done until two more days, so we did, we couldn't pass the actual ordinance for them to own the property. Um, but Kyle made this up so they have possession unless somebody comes forward with a petition, which I haven't heard anything down at all, um, so this gives them a possession, they wanna actually start hopefully. Digging a basin here in the month that it works out well, so they're gonna bring in heritage home and hopefully we see a nice house there. This just gives them access to do that before we pass the ordinance. Month. And if somebody comes in the next two days, it will not happen, so, with the proper position.
Make a motion to pass resolution seven oh five?
Second.
Second.
Tyler?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Jordy?
Aye.
Aye.
Number sixteen, discussion budget for year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, um, that's moving along, I know I haven't got a, yet, what kind of numbers are coming in, I did get survey from, I, what they stole the neighbor's survey from another town, we have nineteen towns, we'll bring a survey for. For insurance, pay, vacation, all the above, it's a full length survey they did on us for us, um, we've looked at payroll costs already, we know that the pump for the back trailer is coming up, um, it's gonna be fifty, fifty-five thousand. Um, we've essentially already taken off the mower, 'cause we're already starting to know that numbers have to be shifted around and make things pay, um, so we're starting to narrow our budget down. Um, I've worked with the police for, for the office over there, um, we'll be getting numbers for, for bids and everything, but essentially, we'll be coming together, hopefully. I'll send some notes out in August sometime for days that will do a hearing, not a hearing, sorry, workshop, um, I did go to the school board last night to talk about Lincoln Street. Um, their hearing, their hearing, their workshop is July thirtieth at eleven in the morning, um, I don't know what day that is, Tuesday, thank you. Um, they told me that they will know on that day if we will move forward on streets or not, we'll know if it's priority for the budget or not, so, that'll be a big ticket item for us as well, so. I know we've come forth with the other project so far, so, or options, so.
We'll look forward to that.
Yes. Now that'll be a big ticket item if they decide to move forward on their share, so. I don't know if anybody knows about it, get it out there, um talk to people, uh they said, they said get people know about, so they can tell them if they're for or against it or, or what. So if you see your local school board member, let them know what you think, one way or the other.
Is that the Lincoln?
Yes, yep, so it says ask them to check in on both from pretty much gate to gate on Lincoln.
Okay.
And um that's what they're gonna be discussing about, so.
Number seventeen, council comments. Number eighteen, public comments, any comments from the public?
I can tell you now. So you, we have you at forty point seven two percent is blighted. So that gives you, you can go up to fifty percent, so we think you have sixty acres left. So total area of Plainview is six, six hundred and forty seven total acres. Um we've blighted.
With the caveat, that, it changes if we annex anything in, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So, so we, we blighted things that weren't in city limits for the potential, so that obviously skews the number as we, as we annex things in.
But, but the number I'm giving you is just what's inside town.
Yep, that's what, yep.
So it can be, it can be, if it's part of a bigger area, it can, if it's part of a bigger area that is inside town, um it can be outside of town to be blighted. But if you're going to adopt any redevelopment projects, it's gotta be annexed first. So we like to, we like to blight as much as possible, it doesn't sound very good, but I like to have as much as possible in a redevelopment area, but still leave you a little breathing room, cause we don't know what might be coming up.
Hey Jeremy, on that Lincoln Street, where it's not platted, do you have to do anything with that or?
It is blighted.
It is.
Yeah, it, there's, there's already an ordinance passed in two thousand twenty one, it's already at the courthouse, it's done.
Okay, I just, whatever, I'm like that.
Um I've been trying to get the county to put that on their G I S for the last two and a half years and I've been there about four times and they keep telling me it's, they send it off to the third party to do that and it hasn't been done yet, so.
Okay, I just making sure.
Yeah, it's legally done, yeah, so, but that's why they didn't realize it, cause G I S had, G Works didn't change it.
Yeah, so I said we have six out of ten under blighted factors and most plating was one of those.
Yep.
But we dropped it down to four out of ten, we threw that one out. Thank you guys.
Um, before you go, I mean, you can go, this is, you are dismissed. Well, I don't want one of those speeding tickets. I'm off duty, I can't guarantee the other guys out. Um August seventeenth is the day that we are planning to have our bike radio. Andrew left to go speak with the uh fire, the rural fire board to see if we can have it at the fire hall. It's, uh just in case it's hot, um last, last year I think we had to move it twice or something like that, didn't we? I think, so he's gonna see, uh hopefully they'll approve us having it out there at the fire hall. Once we get that approved, then we're gonna start passing out fires. So and he's doing a really good job with that, making contacts and, and getting that out there. So the chamber will be getting probably a fire tomorrow, just to pass around to the businesses, so.
Reminder for the fireman's feed for the council of July sixth. Cut.
I guess this time we'll go into executive session, so that's everyone to, usually, council chair.
I need a, I need a motion for that.
I'll make a motion to go to executive session for a legal device.
Aye.
Aye.
Meg?
Bye everybody. Glad you got to hear my puberty voice.